Dennis Johnson.
Present.
Emily Pearson.
Present.
We have quorum with all members present. Moving along to the approval of the agenda. I know we have some changes to the agenda.
I do. Can you under old business mark off the salary or roots and add bamboo?
Bamboo, done.
Also under new business, I had a new year end meeting. We've already just established it. I have gift cards too for you to pass out and a tape on vehicle for a newly appointed supervisor.
Then Aaron's, you're covered under legal counsel. All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Dennis Johnson.
Second.
And wait Pearson.
Motion is second. All in favor. I opposed. We have an agenda. Moving along to the approval of prior minutes. Town council staff meeting dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Town council exec session memorandum dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, and the town council meeting minutes for November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or revisions to any of those minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve all three sets of minutes from previous meetings.
So moved. Dennis Johnson.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor. I opposed. Good to go there. All right, moving on. Approval of the claims. Has everybody had an opportunity to look over the claims? Any questions, concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the claims as presented.
So moved. Dennis Johnson.
Second.
Emily Pearson.
Motion is second. All in favor. I opposed. Let's go ahead and pay the bills, Ms. Garrett. Moving along to the council committee report. So no report under EDC. Mr. Freeman?
Good evening, council. Nothing to bring to you from the store line.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to the legal counsel, Mr. Colt.
Yes, I would just ask that the council consider the approval of the bylaws and articles of incorporation for the the Cicero CDC that we're creating to be the owner of the property that we're planning to acquire down on Peru Street.
And this is basically the precursor to what you need approved formally for the next meeting in December?
Correct. If we approve that tonight, we can go ahead and file it, and then at next meeting, we would appoint the leaders.
Okay.
Who can change those bylaws in the future?
The town could, or anyone acting as our agent.
So that board or this board?
Uh, once it's established, it would be that board, but that board reports to us, and their board members get appointed, I think, on an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you. Eric.
Anybody have any questions, comments? How do I need to word this? So I will entertain a motion to approve the bylaws and articles of incorporation for the newly created CDC for the property down on Peru Street.
So moved. Emily Pearson.
Just a, what? I was gonna make a point of clarification. You said, as it relates to the property, the CDC can do anything, I mean, can do other things beyond this property, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear.
So we have a motion. Do you want a second?
Sure, second.
Motion is second. All in favor. I opposed. All right, good to go there. Ms. Garrett, if you could add that to the agenda for the next meeting. Uh, Cicero Jackson Township Planship, Plan Commission Report, Mr. Zawodski.
Evening, council. I sent everybody email earlier today. Sounds like you guys got that already. I have here in front of me this month's version of the director's report. This is for November of twenty twenty five. Permanent revenue for the month of November twenty twenty five was one thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars, bringing something a year to date of sixty thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Same time last year, November twenty twenty four, we were at five thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars for the month, fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars for the year. It's a difference for the month of November, minus three thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars, and a plus for the year of one thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars. We issued a grant total of six building permits for November twenty twenty five, two for inside corporate limits, no new homes. We issued another four out of Jackson Township and one new home, although, however. Estimated cost of these projects permitted was five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars even. Land commission meeting is scheduled for December tenth, twenty twenty five here at Town Hall, seven P M. BZA is scheduled for December eighteenth, twenty twenty five here at Town Hall, seven P M. Both committees have items on the agenda and will meet. That's my report. Anybody have any questions for me?
Sir, thank you very much, Frank. Mr. Strong?
No, sir, nothing.
Do you have anything under special projects or anything, or are we good to go?
Well, we can tell us if Mr. Bryant covers a couple of things.
Okay. Moving along. Town engineer report, Mr. Bryant.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
All right, how does an engineer report the wastewater plant? Oops, sorry. I always forget that. Reynolds continues work on the wastewater plant, uh, basically working on the oxidation ditch rehab, digester rehab, and blower installation, trying to get the, the next big milestone is to get the digester back online so we start wasting sludge out of the new treatment train. Uh, we have an onsite meeting tomorrow, uh, ten o'clock, by the way, if anybody would like to attend. And then finally, they do have a pay application that we had emailed seventeen for processing, so if anybody had any questions about that pay application.
No questions here. You said there's payment to, to, part of it's to Reynolds and part of it's to Cicero, correct?
Correct.
Do we need to approve both separately?
I would think the other's fine, yeah.
A total bill, okay.
Total bill is nine hundred and two thousand three hundred and seventy-one.
You wanna make the motion?
We had discussion of holding off. Previously, we give a payment.
So Rhonda, if we approve it tonight, when does it get paid?
I can pay it tomorrow if you'd like. It's a wire. We've already required, we're already requested a drawdown from the bank, Bank New York, um, and it's set our bank, so anytime you tell me to, I can release it.
So really, with it already being drawn down, is there any point in holding off?
So, yeah, so we drew it down already?
We did. When I get the request, I draw it down, because then it has to be approved from the bank, and I have to have it approved, because it exceeds my, um, limit to approve daily, so I, a couple days in between, but, any, anytime.
You guys know how I feel about it?
Pay now, pay it next time?
I don't care if we approve it, I just don't know why we have to pay it so fast. When do we get it, when did you get it in your hands, Rhonda?
I got it, uh, I can't tell ya.
We emailed it on November twenty eighth.
November twenty sixth, I had some other data.
This has nothing to do with you, Keith, at all.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, it's new, so.
I mean, as you know, the contract gives us thirty days to pay, so, with Reynolds, so, I mean, we don't have to.
But we drew, we already drew it out of our account that earns interest? I would just like to see us improve those procedures.
We could absolutely go take the initiative to change our pay schedule, because I just, just need to know what to do.
Well, I, I understand. Because it was, what, nine hundred some thousand dollars?
It is.
That we could have earned interest on for a month?
Couple weeks, yeah.
At least a couple of weeks, yeah.
The flip side of that is, is with this bot agreement, if there's incurred cost for them buying materials, et cetera, and financing, we, we get billed for that on the other side, so I'm not sure what we gain, to be honest with you, because it's not a conventional agree, construction agreement, but, just.
I'll make a motion to pay pay application seventeen at the end of this week, fifth. Can you do that, Rhonda?
Have a motion or a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor. I opposed. Go get them paid.
Everybody, did you have any?
I didn't vote, um.
So you're a nay?
Sure, I'll be a nay.
Got it, thank you.
West Jackson Street, uh, there is a pay application that we got from them finally right yesterday, and we did email yesterday, but I'm not proposing unless you would like to. At the next council meeting for that project, but they continue, they've got all the striping done, they're basically done, other than, um, a couple other things. We're getting a quote from them for some pipe bolliers. Potentially, we could have them do that, both in Washington Street and then that, over here at the control, at the electrical panel. They also have to take a power pole down here, they've got it disconnected, but there's an electrical service over here on the north side of the building that fed some of the street lights that we rerouted to the One in the Pocket Park. So we didn't have two services right next to each other. We still gotta pull that pole. We have to still walk into a punch list. We've been hesitant to do that until we get the light situation sent out, or straightened up, and they get the lights replaced. I did send out an email. They finally told us that the, they were having a hard time getting the light fixtures to match what's on the causeway, which we pointed out to them, well, what we really, it was in the change order, was what was on East Jackson. So they've made us some middle now to, basically, get rid of the frosted globes, put the clear lights and the fixtures the same as on the West Jackson Street. But I told them we'd get, they wanted direction to make sure that's what the town wanted, so I told them.
East Jackson.
East Jackson, I'm sorry, yeah. So they'd be the same ones, same fixtures and clear globes as East Jackson. I, that's what we would recommend, but I want to make sure everybody here was okay with that.
Gives us the most consistency.
Apparently, they don't make the ones on the causeway anymore, so.
Yeah, I think our intent, Joe and I talked about it, or, no, Dennis and I talked about it, we're the same all the way through here. So I think that was the intent.
So is everybody good with, go to that?
I'm good with it.
So pay, yeah.
I'm talking about the lights, not the pay.
You guys driven them up though?
I've. I'd like it to be consistent all the way.
Yeah, they need to be consistent.
Good.
So we're not paying the pay application today?
Uh, we're not paying that either.
Yeah, assuming it'll be on the agenda for next meeting, so.
Well, no, I don't know. We'll talk about it here in a second.
We're still on the lights.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
What do you guys want? Do you want to keep frosted? Do you want it clear?
I don't have a strong opinion. What were they supposed to be? Clear?
Supposed to be clear.
Correct.
And that's what they're proposing?
Yes, or replacing those, but they're not, they're also replacing the LED fixture that's in it.
So they were, what was in the quote was what was on the causeway, so it had the little glass piece in the middle.
Yeah.
That's what was in the quote, and they put these up. What's on that side is, it looks like it's an LED, it's, it's clear, but it looks like it's an LED, it doesn't have that decorative piece, so it looks like it's all one piece.
And that decorative piece is probably the reason they quit making it, is it breaks really easy. Talking to Sean and Terry, I, I don't think we want to continue those anyway, even if, even if it was an option, because they tend to break. If, I mean, if you drive down there now, you probably see a couple of them broken, leaned over.
They're tilted, at least.
Which is probably why they quit making them. The change order actually said to match East Jackson, regardless of what's, they didn't do what was in the change order. But, so, we're not looking at a cost to, to fix this. It's something they're gonna take care of, so, they just don't want to order eighty of them, and I say we want something different, so.
So then the question is clear or frosted? Well, we told them that we want it clear, and that's what we stated, so that we didn't have to replace all the others.
I don't have a strong opinion, so, you guys have thought about it more than I have.
The frosted is pretty.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna waffle a little bit here, so I just drove down there again tonight, and all those clear globes are dirty as could be.
That's, that's the drawback to the clear.
But what would happen is, if you did that, then you would have to pay for all those globes to be frosted, which we have an accounting for, so.
That's, uh, east of nineteen?
Correct.
I mean, are we talking about doing frosting?
No, we push, we, I mean, that's, do we want them to retrofit to clear globes? Is the question?
Well, the other advantage to the clear, even dirty.
They produce more light.
They're, they're, they nearly double the light.
Yeah, that's been our direction all along, is we go back to clear.
So I, I mean, if the council wants to stay with the frosted, I, I'm not gonna fight for that. It's just the, but we, we wanted them to be like East Jackson Street, so.
I say we just move forward to clear.
That's my opinion, too.
Clear and the, and the fixtures to match East Jackson.
Jimmy, can you get up there and clean those every other week or something? That'd be all right.
Add another cost to the town, correct?
Correct.
Maybe we better build frosted, yeah.
So is that the agreement?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
All right, move with the clear.
I'm going back to pay application eight, so it looks like it's for about sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
Correct, it was primarily for sod and striping and a little bit of pavement miscellaneous.
Dan, is all the striping done? I didn't pay attention there, Jimmies.
Well, I see some striping out here under what's not, under snow, so I believe it is. But they haven't, they have not billed for that additional striping yet. If, if it is done, it's not in this invoice, it, there will be.
One additional striping?
For the parking spot, there, North and South Byron, that was not part of this invoice, but we told them we needed to get it done, but it, it was not included in this invoice.
I think the piece against you, maybe you want to run it up, Jimmies, and, uh, or Eric, is.
Are you talking, but the parking striping was already there.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, it was not?
No.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that.
I think there's only one, one spot, more on the inside.
West of the tracks.
East, east of the tracks. Actually, we had like one parking spot on the south side of it.
All right.
So when did they go, come and do this out here, or when did they, you said they were just here, right?
Yeah, it's been a couple of weeks ago.
I'm pretty sure, and that's not done down there.
Actually, yes. The other piece, we're gonna eliminate that one, and we, we put that in G L O, so, definitely something that's in that area by Jimmies, and then Second Way Cross Street by Ericus.
Only fifteen dollars, eight hundred dollars and change funds from the town, the other parts from the grant.
I'll make a motion to approve pay application number eight. So the grant, CCMG grant funds forty-seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars, and the town pays twenty-five percent, which is fifteen, eight thirteen.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor? I opposed. It's getting paid.
Thank you.
All right.
I've done that. Alex, the ballards, probably said?
Yeah, we're working on, the ballards are not in the contract, but we're working on getting those included. We've got underruns on some other things that we can get, we believe we can get that included, that, that we had sent out a detail and some specs to the contractor to price. They came back with more questions than I had emailed. Basically, they're asking whether we're okay with the covers. Instead of putting the pipe filling full of concrete and painting the pipe, they're talking about doing the same thing, except instead of painting the pipe, putting the plastic covers over the top. Uh, they, they made a smidl on that, and they're just asking before they finish up their price of which one we want.
Terry, do you have an opinion?
We have actually bought four of those from down there at the shop, others, and we've had them for about two, almost three years, and they're very maintenance free.
Yeah, they look nice.
We've got the, uh, the yellow ones, but, you know, they're, uh, they, the only problem we had is that a lot, some of them's got a reflective tape on them, which they're gone within a year or so, so that's a.
Yeah, their cemental did not have the reflective tape on them, because I don't think it holds up.
Yeah, it did, doesn't, but that, I, I think it's any color, we want it to be maintenance free, so.
Do they not look cheap to you? That's just a question.
I guess I was looking for, they're, they were at our shop, so it's like, I'm just looking for a maintenance free, something that looks, kept up, so I didn't know, I don't know the answer to that.
May I, had they just slid off anytime?
They didn't. I mean, they're, uh, you buy them in length, so if you're five feet above the ground, and you'll buy six foot trim it to, but yes, they're not attached. The ones we've got, they're not attached, but you have to lift them up and off.
Yeah, you can lift them off, or, I mean, I guess if you're worried about theft, you can put a set screw in it.
Jimmy, you want to say something?
I was, I was gonna say, that's what we did with all our.
You put a screw on it. Now, if you had something else in mind, we could go with that, too, I just.
I just looked at them. I think they look cheap, but it's, you don't have to paint them every X number of years?
Right, yeah, there's pros and cons to it, probably. And I assume I want yellow, whether they're painted or not, because even though that's not terribly attractive, if you make them black, you're kind of defeating the purpose. Somebody's gonna run into them in the middle of the dark, so.
So you said down by the fire hydrant, correct, and then did you say also over here? How many of them are there?
Probably look at two each location.
I was gonna say four.
What's that?
One of them's protecting the fire hydrant, they're like four flights.
Yeah, I think we need two there, don't you?
Right, and we, best one, two, we take that electrical box.
So what do you guys want?
I like the bal, the ballerade personally.
The what?
The ballerade.
Plastic or metal?
I would prefer metal, depending on the cause, but I like the silk, the stainless steel. Barry, also have an opinion? Dennis? Jacob?
I, metals would, would be more, way more expensive, wouldn't they?
I would say.
Well, it's, I mean, the metal's basically gonna be there regardless. It's just whether you're painting it or not versus putting the slip tube on it.
Oh.
Yeah, the metals will be there, concrete, and if we're just talking.
So either way, okay, either way, it's metal and concrete?
Right, just a cover versus paint. I mean, that's really what it boils down to.
And what color the cover in one?
Right.
Or paint.
For some reason, for some reason, I thought Joe was suggesting buy.
No, no, no.
Con, steel covers to put over. I know, I'm good.
Seems like we don't have a decision. Terry, you're called.
Oh, wow. Keith? No, I, 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 I guess I have no problem buying over plastic, but I, I think it, it, it'll last longer, but we should go down there or.
You're the, you're the expert, so.
I think the plastic.
I guess, I guess the thing about this, you put the plastic on it, if you don't like it, the cracker break, you, you pull it off and you paint it. I mean, you, that's.
Right, and if you flexibility, if you're wanting to change your color, say for an example, you get them in the eight to yellow, of course, you can paint the other ones, but this gives you some flexibility, too, if you want to. So plastic, it is the most color. I vote hot pink.
Orange for the Huskies.
I, I would agree with that.
Huh?
I would agree with that. I, I was actually thinking orange, and if they're multi-colored, orange and white.
Yeah.
Yeah, are we doing yellow?
What?
Yellow down by the fire hydrant?
That's what we have down there?
No, we put it down there. Do you want, yeah, are we doing yellow down by the fire hydrant?
Oh, well, that's what I'm saying. I would rather do orange personally.
That just threw me off. So you.
But I'm fi, I'm, I'm literally fine with yellow as well. I'm more concerned about functionality.
I think we need to break it up into two, fire hydrant and here, so what do you guys want with fire hydrant? What color? Terry decide?
It doesn't matter. Uh, the concrete poles, you're gonna keep them off, but that's what I'm believing, is keep them off, so we do the orange and yellow, just something.
The fire hydrant itself is red, though, right?
It is red. Our fire hydrants are red.
Should we go red by the fire hydrant, then? If we're gonna, if we're not gonna go red, I would say yellow, just for simple contrast purposes, over orange by the fire hydrant.
Yeah, you find, uh, something that would stand out.
What was that before?
Yellow.
Yellow.
So yellow down there? What do you want over here by those black fence? I personally would say black.
Well, that's what we're, uh, black would have been my first choice, too, but then you made the point about not being able to see it at night.
I can't see the fence either, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I do like the idea of putting some solar lights up on the fence. I think it'd be a good, I mean, relatively inexpensive thing we could do, put, put those up so that they illuminate at night. You could put them on top of these poles, too, if you were.
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, they'd work.
I don't, no, I don't, I don't know.
Means bump out to your baby, how you, you don't finish it out.
If it's one black, you want to try the, uh, flecks rise to start with, they may not hold up for too long, but at least, uh, would increase visibility, it's what the backup attempt.
At least till they got used to it being there?
I don't know why you would put black when it's already getting beat up. You want somebody to see it. And not every vehicle has a backup camera.
That hasn't been hit yet. This is protecting the.
You know what? If Jim hadn't put down the concrete curb, it would have, that thing got scooted back three or four inches already. I saw that the other day when I was walking down that sidewalk.
So you want yellow?
Something that contrasts with black. I, yellow.
Yellow, the contrast. I, I, I'm big on consistency, so if we're doing it one place, I prefer do it in the other, but that's me. All right, this has been our hard one tonight. We got a name. Old near.
Yellow it is.
Yellow it is.
Plastic covers.
Got it.
I'll do that.
Any more design questions, Keith? We're happy to help.
Color selection. I have no more color selection tonight.
All right, before you move on to the twenty twenty-five CCMG grant, for those of you who don't know, yesterday we found out that we were awarded, um, the CCMG grant in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents for our twenty twenty-six project, so thank you very, very much for your work on that. That is great news, so. Dan Mann, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Solid work, sir.
That's a good help.
Seventy-five, twenty-five percent.
Seventy-five, twenty-five, which means we need to get the bids out.
Yeah, Keith, talk us through what we're go, we got going on.
So we pulled together a task order, realizing, well, I actually was working on that task order with the intention of getting it up here tonight, so we could talk about it and see whether you would be willing to approve it, because we knew that they had shortened the time period between grant award notification and when we have to have signed successful bids and signed construction contracts from a contractor. They decreased that from a hundred and twenty days to ninety days. They decreased that from a hundred and twenty days to ninety days. Thinking that at least we could, we could get this approved contingent upon getting the grant, so that we could hit the ground running when we found out we got the grant, and about an hour later, Rhonda sent an email and we got the grant, so it was timely, I guess, so that... We would suggest this task order that we get, if possible, get moving ahead on that, because if we don't, we've got to March first to have signed construction contracts, or we lose the grant. What the email said, the email says no exceptions, so...
You said March first?
Yes. So it's really less than ninety days, and there's rather significant holidays in between there too, that, so...
You think we'll be all right, though, as long as we get started?
As long as we get started, we'll, we'll get bids, I mean, we can't control what bids we get, but...
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get it pulled together for sure. In between trying to pick up stuff in the snow and all that stuff, so... So the task order, you know, is basically the design, the per, the approvals, the bid document preparation, the bid phase assistance, and the construction administrat, administrative assistance. Uh, we did take into account and looked at man hours and being able to re, reuse some of the information on the plans from the prior East Jackson, but still gotta pick up utilities and pull all the buried documents together, so... It did reduce the cost, but as compared to say the last CCMG project that was starting from scratch, but... Still have a fair amount of effort involved, so... Any questions about the task order, any?
Seventy-six, Ken?
I see it. I just had a question, Keith, it says, the project name says 2025, your email said 2026, what, what are we, what is this actually called?
It's 2025, I guess, second round application, even though construction's...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's what...
Construction's 2026, so...
I just wanted to make sure that's what you wanted to say at the top.
It's actually a grant for the 2026 cycle.
Yeah.
But awarded in 2025, and applied for, so it's a little confusing, so...
They're calling it 2026, so...
But it, but our, if you sign this in 2025, our designation would be 2025 task order.
I don't really care, I just wanted to make sure you knew that that's what it said at the top. Um, I forget, do we, do we pay a hundred percent of this cost? Or is this split too? So we pay this and...
It's not eligible for the grant.
Got it, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Does come out of your budget, Terry?
Great job. I was gonna talk to somebody else, Jim?
Parks, Parks Department. Jim is not making out of town, so...
I remember correctly, we just have previous discussion in this, matching dollars as well as Keith's task order be and what those amount could be, and the money was available at that point. I'll make a motion to approve task order five for the community, 2025 Community Crosses matching grant for the 2026 cycle.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Hey Keith, while we got you, um, when, I know you can't control any of this, but like, when would we start? And would this, how long of a pro, length of time do you think this project would take?
As far as...
The actual construction?
Construction, I think the construction's two to three months probably, if we get the right contractor, so we try to get this, you know, if we get, we gotta get the successful contract, then we, and submitted the post-bid submitter with construction agreements submitted to CCMG or to Endot, and then we can't sign the notice of proceed until after we get approval of all those documents. In the past, it's taken thirty days, forty-five days, recollection, so, you know, if we submit that, just say March first for simplicity sake, probably April, we could issue a notice to proceed sometime in April to the contractor, and they, they, they would finish this summer, because it's, you know, we never, not talking about sidewalks, lights, we're not talking about any of that stuff.
So how long do you think that'll be, once they start actually tearing stuff up, to like...
Two months, month, month to two months, I mean, they're not gonna be full-time construction, but they'll...
Right.
...have to phase it so they can do one lane at a time and keep traffic open and...
You think it'll be two months to put new pavement there? That's essentially what we...
I mean, even if you look at this project, I mean, how long did it take them to do the mill and paving, it was a week, two weeks?
We're, we're taking sections of this out?
It won't, so it won't take that long, but the, the phases is, you know, maybe it's a month, but again, you've been on weather and a number of other things that come into play, but...
I forget, are there sections of this where we're gonna kind of do some reconstruction, is that correct?
We're milling, milling, the entire area will have mill and replaced, uh, of at least, uh, four and a half inches of pavement, and then there's about a third of it where we identified walking it, that we're gonna take down another three inches, but another three inches asphalt base where we need some structural integrity.
That's good.
So, yeah, it's, it, it needs it.
And July fourth weekend is open? Anything else that you need for that?
Uh, more sliding drives on that, but we don't have anything else to report, that's a stormwater project, and we're still looking at receiving bids in January, so... That's the underdrain out there. That's all I had.
Thank you, Dan, did he cover everything you had?
Thank you.
Sorry, Eric. Did you want to...
Missed something.
Eric?
So I think the only thing that I wanted to bring up, that, uh, we had a brief discussion about, uh, starting to look at the application process for 2027, and that will, round will open up in July of next year, so to, if you would continue to think about what that project would look like, I know we briefly talked about a couple of different projects and the potential of from Main Street to Pearl Street of getting that section finished, so... Just wanted to sort of keep that on the radar, knowing that we have that ninety-day window in the future that we're gonna be working with, uh, trying to get ahead of this a little bit more in the future, if we could. And then I think the only other thing I had to report was in regards to the fence section over by Broncos, so that is ordered, we're waiting on a couple of, uh, parts to come in for that, so as soon as those parts get in, we'll get that picked up and, uh, get that fencing section reinstalled. And then we'll look at some lighting or something there also, to try to make that more visible, once that's done.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I had, unless anyone had any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
All right, moving along to old business, does everybody remember the conversation we had about the bamboo along Stringtown? Um, it has been a while, it kind of fell off the radar, I did go look at it back then, and it was, it's pretty significant. Um, it's hit the point where it is creating some visibility issues. Um, unfortunately, the homeowner's not in a situation that he is in the capacity to take care of it, so we were gonna look at possibly stepping in, at least for the portion, to get the, the sightlines taken care of. Um, so we need to have that discussion tonight, uh, it was suggested that we have Mark Hall handle the contact.
Uh, he, no, he gave names of several people to, uh, make contact.
Okay.
Long ago, but we never really had follow-up discussion.
Okay, so we can follow up with Mark on those names, correct?
Then I could send them out, who do we wanna have to, to have contact?
Sure.
Do we want, is, is this Terry, is it Frank, is it, do you want a council person, want to make contact?
If I can, I can make contact, and, uh, if you think it's gonna be a problem, I can have Jeff go with it, I get that.
What are...
He's not a guy.
Are we removing this stuff, or what?
Well, that's the next question, I mean, are we just asking them to remove it, or are we offering to help?
I, I, given the time constraints, I, I would, and the situation, honestly, I would be open to the town helping, at least with the portion that's creating the visibility issues.
Like, get it up off our right away, I don't know if you remember the pictures I sent, the email I sent back in July, and had photos, and this comes out, and it's like twenty feet into our right away.
It's pretty significant. It's funny, though, when I drive by and I don't look for it, I don't even notice it, but when I look for it, I'm like, dang, that's...
So there's one further north that I thought originally...
I know, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, this one is...
Yeah.
So are you comfortable making that contact? I will get you...
Yes, yes, I, yeah.
So are we requesting that the homeowner remove it from our right of way, or did you say no, or just, we're gonna offer to help?
I, I think it's first to... I think it's first to request it being removed, and then during that conversation, I think you can ask if they need help, and we will move it out of the right of way, if you have resources to do that.
Right, uh, I know, I was kind of looking at it, I have no idea what you do with that, but it's fireproof, and I guess that stuff is very easy, and you can't kill it, and it says on there that you can cut it, and basically you cut it during the growing season, you use a roundup on it, a heavy dose of roundup, and it takes two, three years to kill it. I guess that stuff is pretty big, but, I mean, so, I guess that being said, then looking at it, it almost has to be down there with a shed, you can cut it, because I thought about bush hogging it, but it's so tall.
I thought so, so, it'll kill your, it'll kill your chainsaw.
Right, right, so, uh, so basically, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it off the right way, you just put down there with some sort of cutting device, hand cut, load it up, take it to the burn pot.
It's not some, uh, excavator of any type?
They said that, uh, I went to Google, they said you have to dig up a minimum of three feet, so we dig it up and replace it, spread by the roots, it spreads by the roots, and they said a minimum of three feet, the soil has to be removed because of the shoots. I guess it's stuff, some states outlaw this.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a reason it's considered sustainable.
Yeah, so, you know, I have no problem if you can give you a contact information.
I'll get you contact information. I'll get you contact information.
Great, great, and, uh, if they need us, uh, go down there with a saw, saw, a mattercar saw, saw, or whatever wheel, get it off our right of way.
Okay.
Joe, did you have a comment?
Uh, another neighbor of mine took a couple of his bamboo, it was right through his front yard, and it started spreading so fast, and he ended up having to, good guy, he went back, go and dig up.
Right.
That's cabinet.
No, it's a Band-Aid, for sure.
Yeah, they, they said in Google, said during the growing season, you spray it, and, uh, it'll come right on back, and then you, it says you wear it out, you wear the root system out by spraying it, two or three years, mowing it and spraying it with forty-something percent, I will say.
Jeez.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, so it'll be a mud hole if you spray that kind of, I would say, you wanna fill it up with Ws, yeah, it's sterilizing the soil.
Right.
Or it's gonna come right back, according to Google.
How, how far into the right of way is it, did you see?
About, uh, when I measured it in, uh, uh, July, about twenty feet, twenty-one feet.
Here's a picture, Eric.
Yeah, but I've seen it, I just couldn't remember how far out it was, so...
And it's...
I mean...
It's probably a few feet now, so...
We're not gonna saw this tonight, but the property owner, this is a problem for that property owner.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna have to be resolved.
And, and I guess the gentleman...
Because we can't, we can't go down there every year.
He's not in a good health spot.
Yeah.
And the gentleman, I guess, complained, and Rhonda's office says that's already in his yard, and it's already jumped the driveway, and got in his yard, so... But definitely, I can reach out there and we can physically, you know, cut it off, you know, get the, get it from right back and spray it, unless, you know, we decided we, uh, spray that, everything.
Well, let's see if we can come up with a plan, talking to the homeowner, at, at least have the initial conversations, if we need to step in further, we can step in further.
Yes.
So, all right, thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
All right, moving along, new business, um, also, Terry, take-home vehicle for your superintendent, um... You just want to give us a little background here?
Yes, I will, uh, so, uh, we made a new position, basically my second command, he is a senior superintendent, and I've been relying, uh, on him heavily to take the initial response, just like this weekend, he was in several times over the holidays, doing road checks, seeing how the, the salting's going, the plowing's going, if water leaks, he's the guy that gets out there and does that. So he already has an assigned truck, so he already has a truck that he drives every day, and so what I, what I would like to do is ask permission to let him have as a take-home vehicle, so that, uh, when he's coming out, he's already got tools, he's got shut-off wrenches, he's got his equipment right there, and just kind of speed up the, the initial responses.
Sure, so in summary, there's no purchase required, we already own the vehicle, just looking to give him the ability to basically respond more efficiently to his job requirements by taking the vehicle home. Uh, my personal opinion is I have no problem with it, Rhonda said it does not affect insurance in any way, um, so...
He will have to pay, like, it's like three dollars a, uh, three dollars a day for insurance for the, um, deduction.
Right, yeah, it, it is a deduction from his check to help cover the cost.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's, yeah.
It's three dollars a day.
Well, yeah, I didn't know exactly what it was, but, yep.
Comments? Anybody have any issues?
I was asking to bring it to the council.
Yeah, he, he's just looking for a consensus, I'm good with it, Jacob?
It's fine.
Emily?
I'm great with it.
Dennis? All right, you've got your consensus, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you, all right. Year end.
Better year in meeting scheduled for December twenty-ninth, at eight o'clock right here, everybody's good with that, right?
This is our pay the bills meeting, December twenty-ninth at eight AM, it takes literally five minutes, so... Department heads, you don't need to be here, just, we need three council people here to give Rhonda the approval to make the payment, we're gonna go.
December twenty-ninth?
December twenty-ninth to eight AM. That is one time, I know I will be in town, so I am happy to be here, if you'd like.
We still have our normal meeting two weeks from now?
Yes.
Correct. And just to reiterate, Dennis and myself will not be here for staff meeting next week.
Mr. Cooper, were you able to look over this release for the, um, did you guys, did you guys have that release for the water main issue that we had, um, and the town paid for, and we're getting reimbursement? You aware of that or not?
Yeah, we got an email, twenty-one K reimbursement or something.
That is, that is correct, um...
Do you need approval?
I was just gonna ask you...
Yeah, we need that approval.
Approve, um, it's, ask for our street department's, Terry's signature, just to allow him to sign this and accept those terms.
Well, going back to the business, before we go there, don't we have something else?
Yeah, I thought that would be...
You have those...
You want me to do this first?
I have that in the business, then.
Yeah, it's under new business, all right. All right, department heads, so, just a little thank you from the town, want you guys to know how much you're appreciated, including your employees, um, if you could share this appreciation with them. Uh, real, realistically speaking, you are the ones that make this town operate, you make it, uh, you make it tick, and, and on the day-to-day, you're here on the ground, and we couldn't do it without you, obviously, so we just want you to know how much you guys are appreciated, so... Got a little gift here for each of you, if you wouldn't mind, when I call your name coming up and taking this for your employees and passing it now, Chief Rednour?
Do I need to add anything to that?
Very good.
Thank you very much, sir. Very much appreciated. Thank you, thank you.
Chief Fo?
Thank you very much, sir.
That's all. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Sorry, Jimmy, wasn't in the budget.
Wow.
Thank you very much. And this would be Ms. Garrett?
I don't get one, just, don't, don't think I'm taking...
Thank you so very much.
As far as our inbound, granted, that's worth, that's worth a little gift card.
It's a, it's a card, a small gift card, just a small token of appreciation to go to everybody, so, thank you all very much.
Stormwater gets it next year.
Yeah. Rhonda?
They got a raise, so...
Another raise?
We can, we can fix that raise and go back to the gift cards. No, we can stick with it, okay.
It's all free runs.
There we go. Thank you all very much, greatly appreciated.
Great job, babe.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, back to this, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr....
Citizens.
I'm sorry?
Comments?
Oh, we're gonna do this after that, I thought we had a...
We're gonna do this later, sir.
No, we're doing this...
We gotta approve that.
Yo, stay in your lane, D. All right. I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Cooper to sign the reimbursement for the water main document.
Some reimbursement release.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's get them paid.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any blue slips, Mr. and Mrs. Hahn, you, you wanna say anything tonight? Good to go, all right, well, happy Thanksgiving, thanks for joining us.
I have something.
Well, you're not a citizen, you're supposed to do this in the main agenda.
Oh, I'm a citizen too.
Fireway, man.
What I wanna say is, thank you Superintendent Hunter for going above and beyond, uh, for the Christmas... What I wanna say is, thank you Superintendent Hunter for going above and beyond, uh, for the Christmas celebration, the holiday celebration this weekend. On Saturday and Sunday, he worked his tail off, a lot of hours, as did some other people, and also thank you, Terry, and the street department for a great job on the roads. And I would like to add to that, that anyone has a problem when things are canceled, like the parade, or postponed, like the holiday celebration, that's too darn bad, because safety comes first, and the people that make those decisions made the right decision, and it's really easy to let your fingers fly on Facebook when you don't volunteer or help, so to the people who've put in countless hours, they deserve an award for making such a nice celebration, thank you.
Always a wonderful job, I know it was a tough decision, I don't envy, well, I've been in the position, but I don't envy that position at all, so, I think you guys made the right decision.
The wind was terrible.
I bet it was.
Well.
I bet it was, so, all right, well, if no one has anything else?